I'd like to call to order the special call to Stechesburg City Council Meeting for June 24th, 2014 at 3:00 PM. This meeting was called by Councilman Chance and Councilman Riggs due to comments that reportedly occurred at a department head meeting on Thursday, June 19th, 2014. In order to speak at this meeting, you will need to request from the chairman of the meeting the opportunity to speak. If anyone speaks out of turn, interrupts others, or is disruptive in any manner, I will declare them on order and request that they cease talking. Item 1 and item 2 appear on the agenda in the order that they do because of the requirement of the Open Meetings Statute as applied to personnel matters. At this time, I will defer to the city attorney, Alvin Lee Hart, to read and explain that section of the Open Meetings Statute. Mr. Lee Hart?
Yeah, I think the section, 50-14-3, the 2, and it said, "The subject's compliance with other provisions..."
Mr. Lee Hart, can I ask if you're speaking to the microphone?
Is that better?
Yes.
The subject to compliance with the other provisions of this chapter executive session shall be permitted forward, and the one on personnel matters reads as follows. "Meetings when discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, dismissal, or periodic evaluations or rating of a public officer or employee, or interviewing applicants for the position of the executive head of an agency. This exception shall not apply to the receipt of evidence, or when hearing argument on personnel matters, including whether to impose disciplinary action or dismiss a public officer or employee. Or when considering or discussing matters of policy regarding the employment or hiring practices of the agency. The vote on any matter covered by this paragraph shall be taken in public, and minutes of the meeting, as provided in this chapter, shall be made available. Meetings by an agency to discuss or take action on a filling of a vacancy in a membership of the agency itself should all be given public, as provided in this chapter." And what this essentially means is, is that any evidence that this body's going to... The executive session on personnel matters is designed to be a deliberative function, similar to that of a jury. No argument or evidence can be presented in a closed meeting. The statute requires that any evidence that the council is going to deliberate on in their executive session that will be closed to the public be presented in public. It operates much like a trial, where the evidence and the... In a similar way, it's not the same anyway, but the evidence and the arguments that may have been made in public, and then the session can be closed, and elected members can then deliberate on what they're going to do, what they've heard.
We are now going to proceed to the presentation of evidence and argument in item 2, and here's how I'm going to proceed with that part of the meeting. The nature of statements reportedly made at the department head meeting involve whether the Open Meetings Statute has been violated. I will ask the city attorney to read relevant parts of the Open Meetings Statute for the record. I will then state what I've heard at that meeting, and I will ask the city attorney to state what he heard at the meeting. It is my understanding that certain city councilmen have made inquiries to various department heads as to what was said at the department head meeting. I will provide those city councilmen the opportunity to report their findings. I will then give the city manager an opportunity to speak if he so chooses. At that point, I will make a decision as to whether further argument or evidence is needed by council. I will then ask the city attorney to read relevant sections from the city manager's employment contract, and then request a motion to move into executive session, so the elected officials can deliberate on the argument and evidence presented to them. The city manager will not be present during the executive session. Now, we're going to proceed with section 2, which is presentation of argument and evidence regarding personnel matters, and I would ask whoever makes a comment from council myself or the city manager to be limited your comments to five minutes. Mr. Lee Hart?
Read the relevant parts of the Georgia Open Meetings Act, which is covered at 50-14-1. It's sequence, it defines a meeting as the gathering of a form of the members of the governing body of an agency at which any official business policy or public matter of the agency is formulated, discussed, or voted upon. It goes on to say that meetings shall not include the gathering of a form of the members of the governing body or committee for the purposes of making inspections of physical facilities. Further goes on to say, "The gathering of a form of the members of the governing body or committee for the purposes of attending statewide multi-jurisdictional or regional meetings to participate in seminars or courses of training on matters related to the purpose of the agency, or to receive or discuss information on matters related to the purpose of the agency, of which no official action is to be taken by the members." The meeting is not a gathering of a form of the members of governing body or committee for the purpose of meeting with officials of the legislative or executive branches of the state or federal government at state or federal offices, and at which no official action is to be taken by the members. The act goes on, and this is a 2012 amendment to the Open Meetings Act, goes on to say, "That any person knowingly and willfully conducting or participating in a meeting in violation of this chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $1,000. Alternatively, a civil penalty may be imposed by the court in any civil action brought pursuant to this chapter against any person who negligently violates the terms of this chapter in an amount not to exceed $1,000 for the first violation. A civil penalty or criminal fine not to exceed $2,500 per violation may be imposed for each additional violation that the violator commits within 12-month periods from the date that the first penalty or fine was imposed. Shall be a defense to any criminal action under this code section that a person has acted in good faith in his or her actions."
At this point in time, I would like to say that I did attend the department head meeting on June 19th. I was there along with city manager Parker, who led the meeting, city attorney Lee Hart, representing his department, and several other department heads, 12 or 13 people in the room. As usual, we go around the table and discuss what's going on in each department. Part of the discussion at the end, the city manager defers to me to see if the mayor has anything to say, and I've said in this case I did, because we had just voted the previous Tuesday, two days prior, for a raise for employees. It was a heated debate, there was lots of discussion during that particular city council session regarding the raise, and I made a ask the city employees, were they happy if they got a raise? And they indicated that they were. And then I said, "I hope you understand that, you know, doing the public's business can be messy, that you can't vet these things out in private, because you can't have more than two councilmen at one time in the room to discuss city issues, and therefore you have to vet them out in the public, and you have to vet them out of the city council meeting, like we had on Tuesday. That's how you do business." At that point, I was interrupted by city manager Parker, who said, "No, that's not the case. I regularly meet with four or five councilmen in a room to discuss city business." At that point, I was taken aback, and I looked over, and city manager Parker reiterated that, and said, and further, "When we go to GMA conferences," which for you all, that's the Georgia Municipal Association meeting, "we get together at those and discuss city business." And he then went on to further say, "I have seen a majority of council in Alvin's office discussing city business." And at that point, that was the end of the comments. I didn't put every word in there, but I put the majority of what was said, and the meeting was adjourned. And that's what I heard sitting in that meeting. I'm going to ask Mr. Lee Hart to speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor. I too was present at that meeting, and it gives me no pleasure to be here. But I do have a duty under Rule 1.13 as an attorney for an organization as a client, and that is why I have to say what I have to say today. I was at the meeting, and, as I recall, the meeting occurred, it began with, it began with the discussion of the mayor, at least part of the mayor's talking about, talking about... There was discussion about the prior city council meeting where a raise was given, and what the mayor was trying to convey to the department heads was the nature of the rough and tumble nature of public hearings as required by the Open Meetings Statute, and was saying, "It's unfortunate these meetings have to happen this way all the time, but it's just, it's just the nature of open government. We can't all meet in a room together to discuss these things beforehand. We have to talk to maybe one city councilman or that city councilman. These things have to be sorted out in the public as required by the Open Meetings Ordinance." And my reflection is the same as the mayor's. City manager at that point jumped into the conversation and said, "That's not how it's always done. I meet with four or five city councilmen in a room to discuss city business." And at that point, I was taken aback. It was like, I mean, it was physical lean back from the table. You know, I was stunned, and that fact was reiterated. You know, it was, I, you know, I get four, five city council members in a room to discuss city business. It happens at Georgia Municipal Association meetings. There was no real qualification of it in any way. I was frankly stunned that anybody would take that kind of admission about themselves and this governing body. And following that, city manager looked across the table at me and said, "After city council meetings, I have seen a majority of city council in your office discussing city business," to which I did not. I've never done that. That's all that was said.
At this point in time, I would like to give each of our city councilmen the opportunity to respond to what was said, or what we said was said. I'm going to start by asking Councilman Boyer to begin that conversation, if you would like to say anything at this time.
Well, Mayor, when you let me know about this situation, again, we are at a conference this weekend, and when you let me know about this particular situation, again, I think all of us, when you first hear that your city manager alleges that he's been meeting with you behind closed doors in secret sessions to make decisions, you've come to one of two conclusions about that statement. One, it's actually true, and in a department head meeting, which is effectively a public meeting, since members of this audience have actually been at those meetings, said that he willfully violated state laws, was colluded with council members. So if it's true, he violated the state law, which, in my view, violates his employment contract. Or he's slandered the council by saying that we meet in these sessions when in fact we do not, which of course is my position. And then you have a situation where the city manager, who is supposed to be a representative of the city, is slandering the very council he is supposed to represent. So if the statement, and I have corroborated this, and I won't say who the department heads are, I did talk to Alvin, I talked to Jan, I talked to no less than two other department heads to verify what was said at that meeting. And in light of that being said, there's really only one option, because there's only two ways to look at it, and both of them end up with severing the relationship with the person who said that. That's where I sit. It's a violation of the, I'm sorry, it's a violation of the employment agreement, however you look at it.
Councilman Brereton?
Yes, ma'am. I, I lost the words, I don't know that we would arrive here. As the council may know, the council does know, as the city attorney knows, as the mayor knows, Ms. Wright knows, I have worked since 9:00 AM Saturday mornings to avoid this meeting occurring. I did my best, I thought, to try to resolve this issue in a manner of, to use Councilman Boyer's words, to sever a relationship, I was trying to sever a relationship with a little bit of grain, as the fine line might block. I'm unable to achieve that. I certainly didn't give my best efforts. I did speak to the city attorney and the mayor, and the statements that you two guys just made, which is exactly what you said when I spoke to you all, Saturday or Sunday, regarding this. I'm not talking, I have not spoken to another department head, and I didn't feel the need to do that. But I did speak to Frank, and I did not get the same answer of what was said at that meeting from Frank. I certainly did not get, I didn't say anything like that at all, little, but I didn't get those exact words and those definite terms. As we all know, when Frank is confronted in a manner without preparing his notes, he gets drunk. And he and I joked about that numerous occasions, and maybe we shouldn't have joked about it as much as we should have addressed it and said, "This is going to be a problem." Frank and I have addressed on numerous occasions that at some point the relationship between he and council had changed, he nor I, I guess, would have counseled sooner than it was. But I have not met, I guess, this is something that needs to be said, I have not met, and by your definitions that you gave earlier, I have not had meetings where we discussed any sort of policy behind any of those wars of ours. I certainly did not call doing that, and acting on that. We've certainly spoken to each other, you outlined kind of windows to the curve, and I think that's true. So at this point, I definitely wish there was, I wish the opportunity was still present for there to be a resolution that's not so final. Mayor, I'm not sure we're at that point. I think you guys know a lot of...
Councilman Riggs?
I reserve my comments until after you take your questions, please.
Councilman Lewis?
I would like to say, I mean, I don't remember meeting behind closed doors in the city, oh, but I do remember meeting behind, being forced on this council, if we have any, that's right. We can, we can truthfully back, not to lie, that didn't mean anything. I think I've been counseling about with anybody else, that's what I can say from the top, that's what I can say right now.
Councilman Chance?
Should I be the last? To be perfectly honest, I'm the one to call this meeting, I'm the reason that everybody in this room is here right now. And the reason being is because we were caught for a technicality and found guilty of violating the Open Records and Meetings Act some years back. And that left a permanent scar on me, and I have made it my mission that everything we do is in full light of the public, period, no matter what those intenances may or may not think. And I was not only appalled, but enraged that we were basically thrown into a different realm by blatant lie and utter fabrication. From everything that we have been told, GMA does not count. We can share a meal, we can have a social function at the Capitol in Atlanta with Jan Tankersley, John Burns, Butch Parrish, whomever, and have a core of them in that room. Now, are any discussions happening where official business taking place? Absolutely not. That is a whole face of lie. And I for one am not going to be lied about, and I take exception with the fact that I have now worked with members of this council for the past seven years, and I'm sitting here telling you that we have never, no matter what was found in what meeting or hearing, to have violated the Open Records and Meetings Act by what we understand. I will confirm one thing. Anytime that we met in GMA or in Atlanta, before Alvin Lee Hart was here, either Sam Brandon or Michael Graves sat in those meetings to make sure that we did not violate any sunshine laws, period. We talked about goals, we talked about our aspirations for the city. I'll give you one in particular, Councilman Brick, I think he could probably remember this well. Joe Brandon, the first year that he became mayor, we met with Michael Graves in Atlanta, and one of the things, one of my goals was that we would have sidewalks on Gentilly in a reasonable amount of time. Well, guess what? We got him. Did we do city business? I don't think so. Is that a goal? Absolutely. Is it something we strove for? Absolutely. But at no time have I been a part of any meeting where four or five, or even three councilmen have been in a room conducting city business as was alleged by city attorney or city manager Frank Parker, sorry, Al. Did I hear what I heard? Absolutely. I heard from mayor, I heard from Mr. Lee Hart, and I actually called other department heads, and they actually asked me to keep their name out of it because they were afraid of reprisals. So that's what I'm going to do. But everything that has been said has been confirmed by multiple people, it was said, and now unfortunately, we're here.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to give city manager Frank Parker an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. What I stated was that on eight to 10 occasions, primarily in Atlanta, GMA, that I was in presence when a majority of city council met to discuss city business. I used no council member's name. I expressed and shared that this practice certainly needed to, you know, be put in past. At that point in time, city attorney Alvin Lee Hart basically entered the fray, and in that situation, I said to Alvin, "Alvin, on what occasion, I've seen a majority of city councilmen in your office, did not say that you were conducting business, but I said I saw a majority of city council members in your office." And again, that was the statement that I made out. I didn't say it was a regular, I didn't say we met in this council chambers on a regular basis. I said I've attended, and I can demonstrate, if necessary, those occasions when those meetings took place, because in some cases, there was other people present. Two of those cases, cases, the previous mayor of City Stechesburg, where we met in GMA in private room, in just the group. I have never been in a meeting in Atlanta in GMA when city attorney Sam Brandon or Michael Graves was in attendance. And like I said, there's a couple of the instances where we met and discussed businesses. In one instance, there was four witnesses to that event. And, but, like I said, the content was that this is something that, so if you don't, we were talking about changes and how to do things better, we discussed how better to notify a mayor and council when we had businesses moving to, basically building a new business, our new building here in Stechesburg, reached an agreement on that. And then the comment, as I turned to the mayor, was, after the comment on everything, it's kind of a nuisance, but everything has to be one-on-one, and I said, "Man, in the past, I have not always been the captain." And I said, "On eight to 10 occasions, in Atlanta, primarily at GMA, primarily in Atlanta, a majority of council did get together." And as I said, you know, if council were lying, I certainly will elaborate at some point about the individuals that was there. But two occasions, when a private room was used, on one occasion, they basically, maybe to bring some direct lecture to the event, to John, John and I walked out of the room together, we started to walk across the bridge to the hotel where we were staying. Councilman Chance, she passed us at that point and entered the bridge. At that point in time, John, he reached up very, very by the arm and says, "Let's wait until he crosses the bridge." That's the first GMA meeting I attended at, but again, a private room was used in that occasion, and I can certainly, like I said, at some point in time, if necessary, elaborate on one additional meeting. After dinner, we went out to, and I agree with you, we take our laces late tours out. The day is not considered a, you're not violation of open meetings, but we also, on two occasions, had a second meeting ourselves, when we met at Ted's Montana, and it was this council, wives or spouses, again, in that case. In that instance, city business was discussed as well, as well, and that was at Ted's Montana. And the other, as I said, after coming back from a meeting, the warrior with an alcove, we all entered, our alcove was a social, we're sitting there, and we started having drinks, and Phil, your girlfriend, Canse, Kristy was there, Wilmar was there, my wife was there, Shannon was there, and basically, we moved from social to conduct, well, not conducting, but discussing city business. And there's a few other instances, not a lot of instances where they have taken place. And I'm just alluding to that, that eight to 10 occasions. But in that case, as I said, oh, I, John did not attend that meeting, I think, I'm not sure how long it had been, Eric and Shannon left him up to, and we stayed in that room for a couple hours. And I saw, to some rate, the remarks I was making, you and I can elaborate further if necessary at some point in time.
I don't think at this point in time we need any further argument or evidence. I would like to state that based on what I heard at the department head meeting as mayor, I feel charged to recommend that council consider, and I'm going to bring that out after executive session, that council consider the appointment of an independent council to come in and investigate these claims and report finding to council. I recommend, I will recommend that Judge Barber be requested to select an attorney from outside of Bullock County that can and will conduct a thorough and unbiased investigation as to whether any of the statements made by the city manager have any merit in the department head meeting. I want to reiterate what Mr. Lee Hart said earlier. It is not a happy moment for me to be sitting here. I want to reiterate that I wish that the comments have not been made. Had those comments not been made in that meeting, I wouldn't... Had those comments not been made in that meeting, I would not be sitting here, and we would not be going through this process. I take open meetings very seriously. And I think our council takes open meetings very seriously. And to toss out that that is not something that is necessarily something that we take seriously, and that happens on a regular basis in violation of Georgia Open Meetings Law, got us here today. So at this point, I'm going to ask if I can get a motion from council to enter into executive session. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, did I understand you to say that you allow some comments upon a request?
We are going to hear no other evidence at this time.
Did I understand you to say that earlier, that you would allow some people in order to make comments?
No, I did not say that. I said I would determine if any other evidence was needed at this time, and I'm saying it is not. Did I have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will enter into executive session. Would y'all please be excused? Thank you. Do I have a motion from council to active executive session?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're back into the regular meeting. It is very unfortunate that we have arrived at this place. Mr. Parker has done tremendous work for the city and should be properly commended for the work he has done. However, based on all that has been presented today, it is obvious that the relationship between the mayor and city council and the city manager who serves at the pleasure of mayor and council has so deteriorated that the important relationship has become unworkable. Based on the argument and evidence presented and after due deliberation, the mayor and council find as follows. The statements made by the city manager at the department head meeting are either true and the city manager of the department head, excuse me, are either true, and the city manager has violated the Open Meetings Act, or the statements by the city manager at the department head meeting are false, and he has damaged the integrity of this governing body. These statements of the city manager, at worst, implicate the city manager's engagement in improper and unlawful practice. It constitutes a breach of the public trust. At best, these statements are false and constitute malfeasance that damages the integrity of the governing body. Based on these findings, I would ask for a motion to terminate the services of the city manager for cause, effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Do I have any discussion?
Mayor, the only thing I want you to clarify is, had we not taken the action today, what would have been your next step?
My next step would have been, and depending on the action that's taken by this body today, um, had we, depending on what we do, there's got to be an investigation on the statements that were made. Whether that investigation is instigated through our own ethics ordinance, or whether that investigation is instigated at a higher place, the attorney general's office, and a report made, it would have to, an investigation would have to be instigated on my court. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, what a fantastic job Frank has done for us, getting us out of the hole, balancing our budget for the last four years. He loves this city probably as much as anybody else in this room. He's a friend of mine. I'm sorry it came to this, and, I'm just sorry it came to this, but I want to, want to say what a fantastic job the last four years Frank has done for us. Thank you.
I'd like to say, Frank, you were my friend before I got on council. You're my friend now. You'll always be my friend. And actions speak louder than words. Let me show you later.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you get that, Miss Sue? Can, can I have the opposition again, please?
May. I'm not opposed.
Okay. That's three, two motion carries. Do I have a motion from council to, to allow the mayor to appoint a negotiated interim city manager?
Mayor, I, I would like to authorize you to enter into discussions with Mr. Robert Cheshire, currently in the City of Statesboro, to kind of begin to talk about him serving as the interim city manager. I guess at that time also lay out a timetable of a search for him.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion carries.
Wait, you can answer a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's a little difficult right now. Any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I would also like to ask council to consider a motion to, for the appointment of an independent council to come in and investigate these claims that were made regarding violation of Open Meetings Act and report finding to council. In that motion, I recommend that Judge Barber be requested to select an attorney from outside of Bullock County that can and will conduct a thorough and unbiased investigation as to whether any of the statements made by the city manager have any merit. Do I have a motion from council to do that?
Move. Second.
Is there any reason the GDI couldn't do that investigation, Miss Mayor?
Is there any reason you can't let us get through our vote before you open your mouth?
Well, yes, sir, with all due respect, council.
No, we're, we're in the middle, we're in the middle of a motion and discussion.
The mayor did, in any case, she would accept comments from the public, and I think.
Wouldn't go for that, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a motion, I had a second, do I have any discussion from the council?
The only discussion, just want to make sure that the attorney that's selected by Judge Barber is both not practicing inside Bullock County, nor has he had any business before the city or county at any point.
I think that's fair. Can you please say that?
In recent times, I mean.
Say that again, please, Councilman Boyne.
Want to make sure that we're not picking a local attorney to be to investigate the city. We want somebody impartial from outside to come in. I just wanted, I know you said that in your statement, I just wanted to clarify that in the motion, if that's all right with you, Travis?
I would say most attorneys in the southeast Georgia probably may have a case or two, depending in the Bullock County court system, so.
Okay.
I would want to limit it to, an attorney that's had no business before this council or the city, I think that'd probably be the easiest way.
That'd be enough. Okay.
Mayor, is this something else that we need to, I guess, like, Mr. Robert noted, at least, seek GMA's a little bit of advisement, this, I'm sure this is someone that has probably heard of another city, just to at least, there's a lot of legal advice out there, taking courses with this room, so, they may have a, hey, here's your sheet, follow some of these things, maybe let's at least look into it, if you can look into it, I believe, not for me. Just kind of see if there is sort of a, this is, this is a plan, this is how you would appoint that. That's on everybody.
No, I would definitely do that. I will definitely do that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a consideration of a motion to authorize a merit to sign a service delivery strategy. We're going to take that off the agenda today. That will not be part of this meeting. Miss Sue, do we have anybody that signed up ahead of time to speak?
No.
Okay.
Miss Mayor, I was unaware that anybody was given the opportunity to sign up to speak. I didn't see that on the agenda. Would you afford me the opportunity to speak?
Mayor, there are, on the agenda, there is no agenda item for public comments. This is a specially called meeting.
Okay. So in that case, under the advisement of City Attorney Lee Park, we're not obligated to have public, public speakers this meeting, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes.
Okay, in that case.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Miss Mayor.
Do I have any other business from this council?
No.
Do I have a consideration of a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.